Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass. Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the January 16th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor. Trustee Katsinas. I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of January 16th, 2023.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Community Pride Award, Orland Park Pioneer's Lightweight Cheer Team.
So tonight, we're going to be giving community pride awards to three different Orland Park Pioneer's cheerleading teams. They're lightweight, they're junior varsity, and their varsity cheer team. And I even wore my Pioneer's colors today, the red and blue. As most of you probably know by now, I go way back with the Pioneer's, all the way back to the very first game and very first year. So, and my sister was a cheerleader as well, so I go back all the way to the 70s with the Pioneer's. And all of the girls should be very proud of what they've accomplished. It takes a lot of hard work and dedication to do what you did. But also, I don't want you to forget to thank your parents because they're the ones taking you to practice every single day. They're the ones taking you to all of these events. They're the ones that are there cheering you on. And then, of course, your coaches for all the time they volunteer and give. So make sure that you thank them when they go home because it wouldn't be possible with all the work your parents and your coaches do for you. And with that, I'd like to call up the lightweight cheer team.
You guys are lucky to do more than they got the police station.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment that we had the boys in a couple, a month or so ago. So these are obviously the reason why the boys did so well is all these cheerleaders with all, so, I mean, those championships are not possible without you guys, I know.
Love the cheer.
And Trustee Katsinas with his cheerleader daughters. Great work, girls.
Junior varsity cheer team. Varsity cheer team.
Yep. And again, congratulations to all of the girls. And also point out that many of them are going on to Sandberg and they think they just finished fourth in the state. So they did a great job as well.
Yes, they did. Accounts payable approval.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from January 17th, 2023 through February 6th, 2023 in the amount of $4,100,527.25.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for January 20th, 2023. Approval. Item B, amend Title VII, Chapter IV, number of Class B liquor license ordinance. Item C, maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code Resolution. Item D, train HVAC equipment co-op purchase. Item E, sportsplex roof ladder and gutter project, RFP 22-068. Item F, village-wide sign replacement purchase goods only. Item G, baseball field lighting at Centennial Field Four. Item H, Laguna Woods subdivision roadway and ditch grading improvements construction management award. Item A, or item I, authorize the sale of brine making equipment to the Village of South Howland, Illinois ordinance. Item J, office and janitorial supply purchases suburban purchasing co-op. Item K, Laguna Woods subdivision roadway and ditch improvements bid award. Item L, Safari Land Shift 360G3 ballistic vest and accessories for SWAT equipment purchase approval. Item M, Police Department data storage device replacement purchase approval. Item N, Safari Land Protec Defender X Level 3A Ballistic Shield and Assault III Level 3 Ballistic Shield purchase approval. Item O, Main Street Triangle Tiff District Amendment Downtown Orland Park Tiff District Designation Support and Business District Designation Support. Item P, ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 14 Massage Establishments of Orland Park Village Code. Item Q, Zayed versus Village of Orland Park. I guess this is what happens when we have three weeks.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve items A through Q of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Orland Hills West Road and Ditch Reconstruction Design Engineering Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the proposal from Engineering Resource Associates of Warrenville, Illinois titled Proposal for Engineering of the Orland Hills West Subdivision Road and Ditch Reconstruction dated January 20th, 2023 in amount not to exceed $74,100 and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to a village attorney review.
Second.
And so everyone knows, this is for Orland Hills West, which is another one of those subdivisions with ditches. And that's, this is a engineering for next year, correct? So we're doing Laguna this year, next year Orland Hills. So we're trying to get through these subdivisions that need to be cut, you know, from 40, 50 years ago. Any questions or comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2023 Road Improvement Program, I'm sorry, 2023 Road Improvement Program Tree Trimming and Removals.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve the proposal from Davy Tree Experts for tree trimming and removals for $70,400 plus a 10% $7,040 contingency for a total cost not to exceed $77,440 and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second. Comments? Call the roll. Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. And just so that everyone is aware on the, on the tree trimming, technically parkway trees are the responsibility owner, just like your grass. But when we do, we do do the road repair, since we're bringing in some big equipment through there that can hit those branches, we do take care of that beforehand so that we don't damage the trees. But still, kind of recommend, because we don't do what I would say is a, you know, as thorough a tree trimming as you might otherwise get done. So, you know, just keep that in mind.
Request increase the number of Class B tobacco licenses.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve increasing the number of Class B tobacco license from 10 to 11 for Rubber Ducky LLC doing business as Windy City Vape. Or I move to deny increasing the number of Class B tobacco licenses from 10 to 11 for Rubber Ducky LLC DBA Windy City Vape.
So which, so which one are you motioning?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm moving to deny it.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so the motion is to deny increasing the number of Class B tobacco liquor licenses from 10 to 11 for Rubber Ducky LLC DBA Windy City Vape. Okay. Are there any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Do you understand that this was going to be put into the mall, at the mall?
Um, okay.
This was going to be put in as a kiosk in the mall.
Selling vape pens.
Correct.
I, I just don't believe that's really where we want this to be sold. I mean, we want to sell Orland Park, Orland Square as a family-friendly place where, you know, you bring in young adults. I mean, I bring my teenage daughters there. I don't, I just don't think that's a place where we should be doing this. And there's other spots in the village this can be done.
I absolutely agree. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, or Trustee Katsinas.
I also think after talking to Deputy Chief West, it does pose another burden on the police department monitoring the mall. We have an age-restricted product that would be sold, you know, right there within the mall with a lot of kids present. So I'm in complete agreement with you on a no vote. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski. Mayor Pico.
Aye. Motion, motion carries six, nothing to deny the increase in vape licenses or tobacco licenses.
Dogtopia Development Petition for a Special Use Permit for Animal Services with modifications from the Land Development Code. Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I feel without Trustee Campus here, I've got to, you know, step up. I move to approve the Special Use Permit for Animal Services with modifications, Dogtopia 18030 Wolf Road, subject to conditions in the Board of Trustees recommended actions for case 2022-0688. And I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, the ordinance granting a special use with modifications for animal services, again, Dogtopia 18030 Wolf Road.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I want to state that first of all, I'm a dog lover. But first of all, I have issues sometimes when you have a pet store that caters to dogs coming into it if you have restaurants nearby. I just have a concern. I understand they're going to be good business people in cleaning up any dog waste, but there's still other issues with odor and enough green space. So I know it conforms to our code. I just ask in the future if we looked a little closer at the code with eating establishments nearby.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I, I tend to agree with Trustee Katsinas on this a little bit because, you know, sometimes there is a little bit of traffic with pets and things like that. And sometimes they do, you know, make mistakes. And that area over there, it's all sidewalk. There's, there's no grass unless you go across the street over to the, where the parking lot is. So the grass is kind of small there. So, you know, I, you know, happy to see this business happen. And I'm, you know, happy that they're coming to Orland Park. But, you know, this may be something that we need to keep in mind in the future as we look at these type of places that we have, you know, some type of green space for the pets to go.
And, and we have ordinances regarding the, the waste and all that. And obviously, if you make sure that they're taken care, that's taken care of. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
My concern is that this might be precedent-setting. And I really worry about the businesses next door. I, no offense to Zeus, but I'm not a dog person. And I just, you know, it drives me nuts when you're at a place, you can hear the dogs barking at, at next door. And I just don't think it, it, it's good for the neighboring businesses. Again, that's up to the landlord and it's a civil matter and that. But still, I think for the village, I've got to believe there's better places for this to go.
Did we have any businesses complain at the?
Steve, can you just talk about this a little bit?
No, no one spoke. Actually, no one attended the meeting. There was one person from Dogtopia there. None of the neighbors came out, either the businesses nor the residents.
Yeah, so.
Particular business model.
So there were no complaints from the existing businesses. So.
Correct.
At least from my perspective, if there's no complaints from the existing businesses, I don't, you know, and again, this is going to increase traffic for them too. So obviously, they're, they're, you know, familiar with it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to figure exactly where this is at. Do they have a back door, like an outside back door that they can access? And if there's any kind of trees or anything like that, or grass or anything like that?
The petitioner is here, but in case you guys have direct questions for them.
Yeah, if you want to come up to the, to the microphone there, we can, you can answer the question.
To answer your questions, sir, no. There is, there's a back door just for.
Can you state your name?
Oh, yes, I'm.
For the district director. Thank you.
So there's no public entrance for the pet parents to enter. There will be one main entrance in the front. And for the, the back door will just be used for, you know, waste disposal and stuff like that. During the plant commission hearing, I did supply, we paid a separate company to do a sound study. And the decibel levels inside our building will fall at least 15 decibels lower than the required levels within the Village of Orland Park. And as far as the smell studies, we use, you know, very bioenzymatic materials, very earth-friendly that completely break down the waste. We double bag it and we put it out the day that the trash comes, whether that's once or twice a week. So there's been 220 Dogtopias in the U.S. and Canada. There's never been a complaint about noise or smell because of the strict regulations that they put on those two things.
Any other comments? Yeah. So from my perspective, obviously, you know, there, there needs to be places for, for the, for these types of things for, for dogs. And I think we're, what, 200, we're 30 feet. The variance is 30 feet, but they're not going to be outside. The, the, like, all the studies showed that the sound levels and everything else. And there were no complaints from any of the neighbors. So I see no reason not to approve it. Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter III, Section 12 of the Orland Park Municipal Code regarding the available number of pet shop operator licenses issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter III, Section 7 of the Orland Park Municipal Code regarding the available number of pet shop operator licenses issued by the Village of Orland Park, Cook County and Will Counties, Illinois.
Second.
And first, let me say welcome to Orland Park, by the way. And this is not for you. This is for a different business, but welcome to Orland Park. I hope you're very successful there. I wish my, I wish my dog, I could trust him to get along with all other dogs. He gets along with most, but there's just that one every now and again. And he doesn't like being put, he doesn't like not being by us or human beings for a day. So, but this cat adoption, I'm not a cat person, but that's a, you know, vacant center and seems, you know, I know they're popular places. So from my perspective, it's something we should approve. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I think my bark is worse than my bite, so.
Well, you don't like dogs.
It's, it's rough.
So he can, so he can get a cat instead.
But you're, are you a cat person?
What's that? No. Much more dog than cat.
Any other comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Resolution objecting to the zoning actions requested for 9920 West 187th Street, Mokina, Will County, Illinois. Mr. Chair.
Trustee Malani.
Move to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution objecting to the zoning actions requested for 9920 West 187th Street, Mokina, Will County, Illinois.
Second.
So first, I'll start off. This is becoming a common theme along Wolf Road, along, all around that I corridor. And it's Will County, they've already usurped our zoning and changed an R1-zoned property to I2. And allowing just, and if you go by that property, there are hundreds of trucks parked there. And we can do nothing about it. And they're using our roads that we're paying for. And, you know, and Mokina supported us on this. And I hope this time that, that Will County listens to our objections because Will County's not there taking care of those roads. Will County's not there taking, you know, doing any kind of enforcement whatsoever on these, quite frankly, these places that look awful. They're, and, you know, like this one here is zoned Ag2. And it, it doesn't fit their, their long-term goals. So there's plenty of other places for them to go to that aren't this. So, so that's why I will definitely be supporting this resolution opposing that and supporting our neighbors in Mokina. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. And I will also add that I'm having breakfast tomorrow with Mayor Fleischer from Mokina. And I'll let him know that the board did this.
Ziegler Auto Group Nissan of Orland Park Inducement Agreement Extension.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to approve the sales tax sharing inducement agreement extension with Ziegler Nissan as outlined above.
Second.
Are there any comments? And, you know, Ed and Steve and George, Steve stepped outside, but Ed and George, this is fairly common. We do this with pretty much all of our dealers as long as they continue to update their dealership, correct?
Yep. Most recently, we did this with BMW as well.
Okay. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. And, and to note also for everyone, this is, as we talked about earlier in the committee of the whole, this is one of those incentives that are performance-based. It's, it's based on their baseline. So it's a split of whatever additional that they sell. So there's no loss of our baseline to the, in anything additional, it gets split 50/50. So it's a way for us to incentivize it and make it performance-based.
Franklin Lobe Center Hours and Closing Protocols.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation to change the open hours and closing protocol for the Franklin Lobe Center from the period of Tuesday after Labor Day to the Friday of Memorial Day weekend effective April 1st, 2023, to 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Saturdays, and 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sundays. FLC will be open these hours only unless there's a scheduled activity.
Second.
And essentially, this is important, just so the residents understand that we need to figure out how to be more efficient. And there's just not that much use. And there is another track to walk, which is at the sportsplex. So you can go use that one. So I realize it may be something different than some people have used before, but they do have another option. So we just have to be more efficient with your tax dollars. And it's just not used enough. Any, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I just wanted to say thank you for staff for bringing that to our attention.
Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16, Raffles of Orland Park Village Code.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16 of the Orland Park Village Code regarding raffles.
Second.
And George, can you give us a brief update on?
Yeah. We have representatives here from, from Kuanis. They can, they can also answer any questions. But essentially, there is a limit on the raffle prize. About November, we increased that because of Queen of Hearts keeps rolling over. And so as a, as a, just, just in case the Queen of Hearts keeps rolling over, we'll increase the, the maximum pot. If the Queen of Hearts gets to the max of $500,000, then they just draw down. They're just going to pull cards until they draw down. The concern expressed back in November and now is that we never want to get this activity so, so popular that we're going to have traffic issues, security issues. We haven't seen that yet. I, I've gone to the, to the bingo and, and we haven't seen anything like that. Most of their sales actually happen online. So we're not going to have traffic and hopefully no security issues. So right now, what we're doing is we're just amending the ordinance to increase the maximum limit.
And Chief West, do you have any thoughts on this? Any concerns? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and the information we got is that this increase has allowed them to provide several new, you know, donations, community involvement programs. So we appreciate the letter that, that we all received. So I think it's a great use of the money.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Motion carries.
A resolution authorizing the participation in the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative NYMEC and authorizing the village manager to approve a contract with the lowest-cost electricity provider for a period up to 36 months.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution authorizing the participation in the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative NYMEC and authoring, authorizing the village manager to approve a contract with the lowest-cost electricity provider for a period up to 36 months.
Second.
Essentially, this is for village buildings, right? This isn't for the residents. And we're just authorizing, George, to take the lowest, lowest provider. Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Any non-scheduled citizens or visitors?
Any visitors here to speak?
Board comments.
Board comments. Trustee Compass, okay, he's done. Trustee Malani? That's the shortest comment he's ever had.
That was, that was the shortest he's talked in a long time.
Exactly.
Don't look up for it.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Have a good night. Now, I'd like to just remind everybody that the tickets for the Night of Chartourery and Wine, one of my favorite events, is, they're on sale right now. And that is on April 22nd. It'll be a variety of specialty foods and wines. So far, I think it's half sold out. So go ahead and get your tickets while they last.
And for those of you who are from the south side, that's meat, cheese, and wine.
Yes. We're going to have a cheese plate with some wine.
Trustee Katsinas.
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Orland Park Pioneer's. They had three divisions on their cheer team that won first places in their competition. Orland Park Pioneer's Lightweight Cheer, Junior Vars-
State champs. Pardon?
State champs. Lightweight and Junior Varsity and their Varsity Cheer Squad. And I also too had a daughter that participated in that program. It's a wonderful program, not only for the boys playing football, but a lot of the young ladies in cheer and in pom. So congratulations to the parents, the coaches, and these, the kids themselves, the ladies. Thank you.
Trustee Reardon.
Yeah, hi everyone. I want to echo that. We can still hear a few of them out there. As a proud cheer dad, I have a daughter who cheers. She used to be in the pioneer program. It's a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication. And you hit the nail on the head with the parents, the coaches, and all the work that goes into it. Spent about 20 hours in a convention center like someone else did over the weekend at these things. And they're a lot of hard work. So congratulations to them. The rec basketball family village game is February 21st. And we'll have one more meeting before that, but try to make plans. I think it's, from what I've heard, it's, can be quite humorous with some of the staff playing and some of the village staff playing against the, with the rec basketball. It's at OJ Orland Junior High.
staff playing against the, with the rec basketball, it's at OJ Orland Junior High at seven o'clock on the twenty-first, and, little, keeping thoughts and prayers, there was a huge fire in my high school hometown of Chicago Heights today, and it was massive manufacturing, it was leaking into some housing, so keep them in your mind, and also the earthquake, seven point eight, seven point eight earthquake in Turkey and Syria, which was quite devastating there, so that's all.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor, on the, I'd like to recognize two birthdays today, Babe Ruth was born on this day, as well as Ronald Reagan, two heroes of America, that we surprisingly have no pictures of either one of them up here, so.
And also my friend Scott McPherson, our, our, our friend.
Oh, really? Yeah, esteemed, esteemed company.
Yes.
With that, but outside of that, I'd just like to say, it's in the long winter months when the sun doesn't shine here as usual in February and that, it is, you know, it is tough on the, for the mental health, and I've been dealing with, you know, we've seen a couple situations where there isn't, you know, people with mental health should, should get some help, and if friends of people with mental health should try and do their best to help them, so thank you.
And just to point out, there is a picture of George Washington in the executive conference room, so he's not exactly being, you know, fully, full disclosure there, and there's a picture of Babe Ruth in my, in my workout room, so we're covered.
But not Ronald Reagan.
I'll have to go back to my workout room, I don't remember what's.
There's a picture of Ronald Reagan out there, just to point that out.
There we go. What's your favorite quote?
Trustee Radiszewski.
Okay, I too want to congratulate all of the cheerleaders, parents and coaches for the award, there's a lot of work that's involved to obtain that recognition, so congratulations to everyone, and I have to say that it's really, a part of the job that makes it fun is to see, you know, and, you know, be, be a part of that, so it's enjoyable, so congrats.
Okay, so I want to comment and kind of go back to what we, you know, we dealt with for a lot of years, but there was a recent study that came out, I'm, I'm sure you guys are shocked by this, but it showed that surgical masks reduce transmittal of this disease by less than five percent, and it was considered not to be statistically significant, and what I want to applaud this board, because they used their heads, they remained calm, they didn't give in to, you know, and some of you were here, there are other board members that were just full of fear, a school board president that was the same way, that shut down our schools, and, you know, attacked us, attacked us all publicly, you won't get an apology from those people, I guarantee you, but I wanted to thank every single one of you for having the backbone to stand up to what we saw going on there, and the, and the people that tried to trash your reputation, tried to trash you personally, I know the emails and the, the letters and everything else that you got, but it also shows why it's really important in our community, because we have elections coming up, for our community, for our state, for our country, to elect people that take their oath really ser, to the Constitution really seriously, and they don't give in to these threats, and they think about the fact that, you know, and the Bill of Rights is around the corner up here, you know, what that means, and to take away people's rights is a, is a, you know, it's something we have the power to do at times in emergencies, but we should be very, very reluctant to do so, we better be sure, damn sure if we do it, that we know that it's the right thing to do. Unfortunately, our legislature didn't do that, and they still aren't doing that, because while you were away for three weeks, the governor issued yet another executive order on COVID, so almost three years and still over a thousand days for his thirty years of, or thirty days of, of emergency power, and we still have, in a month, it'll be three years, and the legislature is still not holding them accountable, so they're not doing their job. So just in the last two weeks, we had another law declared unconstitutional, so in the last couple of years, besides the COVID, besides Safety Act, the gun ban, all these things have been declared unconstitutional, our job is to follow the Constitution, and while that was going on, one of our reps actually put forth an amendment on the House floor to get rid of the Supreme Court's ability to declare something unconstitutional, so got rid of one entire branch of our, to try and get rid of one entire branch of our government's ability to provide a check and balance, I mean, to me, this is cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs, it's insane, okay, I mean, what, what, I mean, you know, you have to be a crackpot to do something like that, these people did take an oath, just like we did, to support the Constitution, and they should, and again, why do I mention this, I'm going to mention it again, because we have local elections coming up, this board has shown in the last two elections how important it is to get a board, a board full of talented people with diverse experiences and high integrity that take their oath seriously, which this board does, and the, and the community should be proud of it, it's made a difference,